Good evening. It's 7 o'clock and welcome to the Planning Commission of Charter Township of Bloomfield and tonight's meeting of the Planning Board. Tonight we have, let me give you a little overview. We are a seven-member commission appointed by the Bloomfield Township trustees for the Michigan Zoning Enabling Act. Planning Commission is a recommending body to the Board of Trustees who ultimately have the final authority of approval on matters involving the site plan review and land use development. On tonight's agenda, we have an introduction to proposed amendments to the zoning ordinance for pergolas and fountains and a consideration of amendments for mechanical or electrical equipment. The purpose of this meeting is actually to set an agenda in the near future for a public hearing date. And as a general rule, affirmative action is required for at least four of our members in a support to move something forward. We hope this brings about some understanding of what you can expect from tonight's meeting. And with that, the agenda, we tonight have both offices as officers as the first agenda item. Is that right, Tina? So I'll yield to you and you can start your presentation.
We have Dina Mott, the deputy clerk for Bloomfield Township here to swear in those members that were recently appointed to the Planning Commission for the next three years.
And that's for the next three years?
Yes, three years.
Okay, so that's...
We didn't approve the minutes of the last meeting.
We haven't got there yet. We're still on that. We're on swearing in.
Would you like the members to come up in front of you or do you want them to stand at their desks?
Probably if they could come up in front, please.
Okay. So that would be Neil and Dr. Tingo and...
Okay, very good.
I need to greet.
After you.
All right, if I can have you three gentlemen raise your right hand and repeat after me. I...
Aye.
State your name.
Neil Durnett.
I'm Mr. Tingo.
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America...
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
And I will support the Constitution of Michigan...
And I will support the Constitution of Michigan.
And I will faithfully discharge my duties...
And I will faithfully discharge my duties.
As a member of the Planning Commission...
As a member of the Planning Commission.
For the Charter Township of Bloomfield...
For the Charter Township of Bloomfield.
To the best of my ability...
To the best of my abilities.
Term expiring...
Term expiring.
January 1st, 2026.
January 1st, 2026.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
If I can have you gentlemen sign these?
Now we gotta use less.
We have to sign?
Yes, please.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Dr. Tingo.
Thank you.
Add it to your collection, Neil.
It's got a whole wall.
I'm sure. I've got four of them.
Thank you very much, Tina.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
I'm the new kid.
Yeah, it's like the old baseball card just has a whole collection.
There you go. Thank you, congratulations again. Dina, thank you very much.
You're welcome. Joe, your evening.
Thanks, Dina.
Thanks, Dina. Take care of those kittens.
Ah, yes.
Wow. Okay, let's get back to the agenda. Attendance, looks like we have a quorum. We're missing one member, but otherwise everybody else is here and engaged. I wanted to welcome you all as a new year begins, our first meeting. So I'll entertain an approval of the minutes from our last meeting. Is there a move and seconded? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, corrections, or additions? Very good, the minutes are approved. Is there any public comment? Hearing none, we'll close that session and begin tonight's agenda with the site plan review or discussion at least of the agenda regarding the issue with the ordinance. Is that right?
Yes, and if I could introduce this to you. So this is an ordinance amendment to consider specifically relating to two areas. One is addressing some landscape elements to be included as part of our general exceptions. And the second half of the provision speaks to ground-mounted mechanical units and we're actually introducing something referencing wall units. But let's start with the pergolas and fountains. Within this ordinance, we are adding a clarification as a patio and terrace immediately adjacent to the residence are considered under the general exceptions regulations. Many of you will recall back in 2019, we created an ordinance that allowed for a patio to be immediately adjacent to the rear of the home that could have some landscape elements. And at that time, we are considering landscape walls and piers, gas fire pits, masonry kitchenettes, barbecues, and seat walls. So to that list, if you will, we are adding some other elements. As the staff has researched the past practice of the zoning board of appeals, many of the, if not most of the items that have involved some of these elements have been approved under conditions. And we find that with that preponderance of approval, it may be pertinent to update our ordinance amendments, and that is some of the rationale for presenting these to you this evening. So going, referring back to that patio and terrace area, again emphasizing the fact that's immediately adjacent to the residence. It's not one of which would be a patio that would be in the middle of the yard. That still would be considered a use that would have to be under review, but we're specifically talking about that patio area immediately adjacent to the residence. And in addition to those elements that are previously approved, we wanted to consider adding a pergola. Now, a pergola is a slatted roof structure with columns. It was important that we add a definition so that it would distinguish from any solid roof structures. So here's some depictions of what we are anticipating and what we have seen come through with the review over the last several years. And the other criteria related to pergola is that it would not exceed 14 feet in height. As you recall, our accessory structure ordinance does identify a maximum height of 14 feet for accessory structures, so that would be integrated within the ordinance as well as to be screened from public view. So here's an example of an application. The pergola is outlined in blue, so it's rear of the, it's in a rear yard on an established patio. It's adjacent to the principal residence. It's 16 feet from all of the property lines, which is a setback requirement, and also it's screened by evergreen. So here's an example where a pergola, upon application to the department, would be considered under site plan, under their, under review, under plan review permitted, and a building permit would then be accepted and would be processed for permit. The next element is a patio fountain. We have had several patio fountains part of landscape presentations before the zoning board of appeals. And in this instance, it is a inclusion of a patio or a fountain within a patio, and so we're wanting to make sure that that's a distinction within the criteria and also that it be no greater than four feet in height. Four feet was a defining factor in the previous elements that were considered as part of the original exceptions for patios or terraces. We use that as a basis for the masonry kitchenettes and the barbecues and those seat walls. So this is a continuation of that threshold of height. And here's an example of a patio fountain that we have seen. It's outlined in blue. Again, it is in the rear of the home. It's incorporated within a patio. It's immediately adjacent to the residence. It's setback 16 feet from all the property lines, and there'll be evergreen screening around this. So here's an application that would, again, come to the department. It would, under a plan review, determine that those conditions are met, and then a permit would be processed. The second ordinance provision, ordinance amendment that we are introducing to you this evening has to do with ground-mounted mechanical electrical equipment. Currently, the ordinance identifies such equipment as accessory structures permitted in the side or rear yard when placed immediately adjacent to the residence, and they have to be compliant with all of these setback requirements of either one-family, two-family, or commercial. And if they do not comply with these provisions, then they'd have to go before the zoning board of appeals. So as we reviewed the approvals and the process approvals of these applications before the ZBA, we found in many conditions, there is a repetitive approval that has been found. And so we're presenting to you a ordinance that removes ground-mounted mechanical and electrical equipment from the accessory structure provisions in its entirety and adds it to the, excuse me, this is my, site standards of the zoning ordinance. What this does is allows for the, these items, if they new meet the criteria, to be approved and processed for permit. It doesn't require a permission request, which accessory structures do even on occasion, depending on their location. So with this proposal, other than amending the ordinance in its frame, in its formatting for residential side yard placement, we're allowing equipment to project up to six feet into the required 16-foot side yard setback and screened by evergreen plantings. Now, this threshold was established as we did research and looked at various communities surrounding the township and how they treat accessory structure or ground-mounted mechanicals in the side yard. Many communities do allow intrusions of this equipment into their minimum required setback, of which we do not presently as it's written, and found that there's been a, quite a variety of setbacks that have been presented and adopted by other communities, but there appears to be some consistency with requiring at least a defined green belt. And we found that if we looked at the history of how the township zoning board of appeals has approved such applications for the ZBA, that up to six feet into that 16-foot yard has been routinely approved. What this does is it provides for then at least a 10-foot green belt between that lot line and that unit, and, you know, thereby at least establishing still the greenery and that green belt that the township is looking for. It also allows for that evergreen plantings around that unit to approach into that 10 feet, but still, the intention is to have a 10-foot green belt. And then if it's in the secondary frontage, like a corner lot, it can project up to 10 feet into that 40-foot setback. Again, trying to maintain that green belt, in that instance, it would be a 30-foot green belt, allowing that to intrude up to six, 10 feet into that 40-foot setback, again, screened by evergreen plantings. The other condition relates to non-residential districts. As we are looking for all those accessory, not accessory, but service uses, if you will, to be in the rear of a commercial building, that we're calling out that they're permitted in the rear yard as long as they're placed immediately adjacent to the building. In some occasions, and this is actually current language that we have in the ordinance, if the commercial property is such that there is sufficient setback from the building to a side lot line, then they're allowed to put a accessory structure in that, excuse me, the ground-mounted mechanicals in that side yard as long as it's adjacent to the building. So we would, we're continuing that criteria, continuing that provision, but identifying under all locations that it must be screened by either a screen wall or evergreen plantings. And that is missing presently. And in this, and in this section as well as those to come, we are just reiterating that compliance with the minimum decimal requirements of not exceeding 70 dBA. That is in our noise ordinance chapter, chapter 14. And so, so it's not to necessarily reference other chapters. We're wanting to just make sure that that's clear as part of this ordinance and it'll be part of our zoning ordinance. Just to give you an example of what this amendment will do, this is a current illustration that we have in our zoning ordinance. As we are presently working with Giffords Webster to do our illustrations, a little more updated 3D kind of version of illustrations, this would be one that would be updated. But this at least provides, if you were to look at the top illustration, on the left side, it says 16-foot minimum required side setback, and it's showing from the lot line to the house. And then below that, it says 10 feet minimum required side setback. And that's measurement of that green belt that I was referring to. So that would be at least 10 feet to that unit, which is the gray box would be that unit. And you can see how the evergreens could intrude into that 10 feet and still provide that 10-foot green belt. On the opposite side, you're seeing that example I indicated where it'd be a secondary frontage, so it'd be depicting a corner lot, having a 10-foot green belt, excuse me, having a 30-foot green belt. So it's a little out of scale, so I apologize, but I was trying to work with existing illustrations. But there'd be a 30-foot green belt from, and then from there, there'd either be a masonry wall or there'd be some sort of vegetation. Again, but the vegetation could intrude into that 30-foot setback, 40-foot setback, but providing at least no more than 10 as measured from the structure. And then here is an example where, this went before the zoning board of appeals, and it's a generator in the secondary front yard. It's the blue box that you're seeing on the screen. So it's in a secondary frontage over hill. It's 30 feet from the secondary front lot line, so it meets that criteria, and there's evergreen screening. So here's an example that, that would have been a permitted ground-mounted mechanical. It would not have gone for the zoning board of appeals. The other criteria that we are adding is the fact that it's been brought to our attention that we have been processing several wall-mounted mechanical units, or as they refer to as split, mini splits, mini split units. So we're learning the jargon here. And so these wall-mounted mechanical units are found in our residential districts on occasion, but the fact that we don't have any criteria for review, we wanted to make sure that we added such language to our ordinance. And so we would add it to the site standards for residential and non-residential districts. It would be permitted in the side, rear, or secondary frontage wall as long as it would be fully obscured from public view by evergreen plantings at the point of placement. And for a non-residential district, it would be allowed on the wall, in the rear wall, and allow equipment to be fully obscured from public view by evergreens at the point of placement. And again, referencing the minimum decimal level reading. So in our PowerPoint, here's an example where this came before the building department and they wanted to put this unit on their residential wall. It's in their side yard. It's 31 feet from a side lot line, clearly going well beyond that 16 feet, excuse me, the 10 feet that we would require as a green belt. They're actually providing more than that, and there'd be evergreen screening to this. And then the next screen is, here's the unit. And so we're finding that it's not necessarily used in accessory structures because sometimes, you know, they'll be applied to a garage or accessory structure, but it could also be attached to a four seasons room, you know, if there's an indication or a desire to have, you know, separate utilities for, in addition to the home. But the important fact is that if they, if they are going to be located on the side of rear, the side of the building, that they'd be screened with evergreen plantings, no different than any other unit. So tonight, this is being presented for, you know, initial discussion with the board. We're looking to set a public hearing date before the planning commission in February. And Andrea and Wade and I are here to answer any questions that you may have, and certainly upon noticing and publishing for a public hearing, then we would be able to take comments from the public as well with any of these prospective amendments.
I have a couple of questions if I can.
Here, please.
Can you just clear up something for me, the definition of a rear yard? An example you showed, the rear yard extends beyond the footprint of the house toward the side. What's the, how far does that, where is the rear yard? How far does that go?
The rear yard is immediately, it starts from the rear of the structure...
Right.
And goes to the rear lot line.
Okay.
Okay. And then the, the side yard technically is just abutting the side structure, side residential structure. So this, although it's showing the green, it technically, the, that is all rear yard.
All rear yard, the light green and the dark green right up to the property line?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. Oh, so the rear yard extends, so that the, a pergola, for instance, could be in the rear yard, but it could be seen right, it could be seen right up from the street. It could be in the, in the side yard.
You still have to have 16 feet for a setback, yes.
Okay, but it, okay.
Correct.
The other thing, the other question I have is that the example you showed, I have it on screen, it shows the pergola attached to the, to the house. It says adjacent. It could be a freestanding pergola, is that correct?
As long as it's, it's adjacent, so it's, so it can be anchored on or it could be freestanding, but it has to be adjacent to.
Okay, so how far away is adjacent?
Adjacent is adjacent.
I mean, touching, right up to it? It can't be standing like five feet in, you know, back yard.
Correct.
Okay.
I mean, there's a basis of interpretation, but we're, no, we're not going to allow it to have a gap or separation that would be considered at least immediately adjacent.
Okay, okay, it's got to actually be right up against the house, basically. Okay, the next thing is the mechanicals. Now we can, there's no, it doesn't need to go to the ZBA, you can go six feet into the side, into the, into the 16-feet side yard, okay? The problem I have with that is that now without having, without, with it being a right, a neighbor who's close there, someone who want to put a generator or, or something, they have no opportunity to, to make a point, to, to discuss or to bring up an objection, let's just say, that it's right by their bedroom window. And now that's going to run and it's going to be too close to the house. Whereas when it was with, going to the ZBA, at least they had an opportunity to make their feelings known. So when you do this, you take that away from that. Now, someone whose house could be, let's say it's 30 feet from the property line, big property. Well, they can put a generator as far away from their house as they can, get it 10 feet from the neighbor, but if...
No, they can't. The units have to be immediately adjacent to the, the building that it serves. So that AC unit has to be adjacent to the, in proximity to, adjacent to the residence.
Okay, so the 10 feet into the 16 feet is not what's, what's operable. It's not the definite, it's, it's got to be close to the house.
Yes.
Meaning right up against it or?
It's 10 feet.
Yes.
No, that's not...
It's six feet into the 16, so it's...
No, that's not, that's not what we're talking about.
The unit itself has to be adjacent to the, to the structure.
Okay.
And these examples are the worst-case scenario where you only have 16 feet.
To the house.
Yes. So the first criteria is that that unit has to be adjacent to the structure. And then from there, depending on what is the setback, then they, they have to provide at least a minimum of 10 feet. Sometimes those, you know, those units have to be like within, within a couple of feet because of access, circulation, installation.
Sure, I get that. That's, that's fine, I get that. I thought, I see, the way I looked, the way I read it is that it could be into, it could be no more than 10 feet into, sorry, how many feet? Six feet into the 16-feet setback?
Yes, yes.
Which means that, that I thought you could put, you could put way far away from the house. It's within the six feet, but then, then it's closer to the neighbor than it is to you. And...
Well, it's really, it's looking at...
But it does have to be adjacent to the house.
Yeah, depending on the size of the units too.
Yeah.
You know, so there is a void, if you will, that we're trying to accommodate depending on its placement and the size of the unit, the dimension of the unit, of then at least providing that opportunity for at least providing that 10-foot green belt.
Okay. The objection I have is still that there's no, there's no opportunity for a feedback from, from the neighbor. Okay, that's just my opinion. But now that it's close to the house, that makes more sense, I get that. And, and both the pergola and that, so that's fine. Thank you. That's, those are the questions.
One question. As far as the building code requirements for the ground mechanicals, mounted mechanicals, that's still required.
Oh, absolutely.
And it's, it may be a good idea, I didn't see it in here, just to say, it is also has to meet the building...
That's a good point.
Because, you know, in fact, I was speaking to a resident the other day about a, about ground-mounted mechanicals, generator, and the whole discussion came up about the building code and the requirements of the windows that don't open. So that's just to make people aware of that. It might be a good idea.
Thank you, no, I appreciate that.
Okay.
But that would be a building code issue.
Yeah, but...
Not necessarily an ordinance.
No, but, correct.
All of them are subject to the code.
Yeah, but that's the one that comes up the most and people aren't aware of that. So I think it really helps the residents by making them aware of that requirement.
Sounds like that ought to be in italics or something.
I could certainly add that to the staff report so that it's very clear and certainly during the public hearing, we can emphasize that as well.
Okay.
And to John's point, you know, everything's going to be a case-by-case basis depending on placement situations, circumstances.
Right. Thank you.
So can I ask a couple of questions?
Not to you.
No, I'm finished.
Oh, I thought you were?
No, I am. I'm finished.
You good with me?
Go ahead, John.
So I was jumping on his point about adjacent. I'm a builder, so I like judgment calls, but in this case, there probably should be, because I thought at first when I looked at it, that it had to be attached, but it doesn't.
No, we don't use the word attached.
And there's generally going to be some marginal gap of an independent structure, but there probably should be some threshold of that, just my opinion. And also, it doesn't distinguish size, right? So geometry and size would be according to what?
When you, what are you referring to the size?
So how big can my pergola be? I know it can't be more than 14 feet in height. I'm just, at that point, I'm just governed by the setbacks?
Well, it has to, yes, yes, you are. So if they wanted to have a pergola...
2,500 square feet, they could have a pergola 2,500 square feet.
I guess they could. We've never seen one.
So width is not an issue.
Just height.
It's height.
Height.
And visibility, right? Visibility from...
Well, some of it, because you understand too that this pergola has to be on a patio, and the patio itself does have thresholds where it can't be, let's see, an open, the terrace may project into a required front, rear, or secondary front yard setback for a distance not exceeding 10 feet or no more than 25% of the front, secondary, or rear yard. So there is a limitation about how large these patios can intrude into those requirements.
I saw that for the patio and the terrace. By the way, I think these are great ideas. Are you suggesting that the geometry then of the pergola in B2 is subjected to the geometry of the terrace? If you are, then I would say that. When incorporated on a patio and located in a rear secondary, it cannot exceed the geometry of the, or something. If that's what you want, if that's what you want to restrict, I'm not advocating one way or the other, but people like to know the, what, what, what they can build too.
Well, I think essentially, we're already holding it to the size of the patio just by the premise that it has to be located on a patio. So I think it already kind of, like, already defines the maximum size. Because what are you trying to say, that you can't expand the pergola beyond the patio?
Well, I'm just, a couple of things. One is, it's nice to have, if you're going to have, if you're going to put this in, it's nice to have specificity. Two, when you say when incorporated on, doesn't mean it has to be the same geometry. And three, I don't know that you want to tie it to that. So for example, you may have a patio that's X, and you may have a pergola that's Y, and there could be plantings underneath the pergola. I don't have an answer for you, I'm just pointing out what I would ask as a builder. And so, just think about it, you may want some definition to the distance of the pergola, maybe you don't, maybe you want to leave it up to their interpretation. But as it's written, I think there's some subjectivity to how big the pergola could be. I would have read it as governed by the setback and not, not the... I would have read it as governed by the setback and not, not the patio. So it's just a wordsmithing thing and whether you want to go into the geometry or not. The second question is, are you, is the, is this new language? And I'm sorry, I didn't compare it to the old language, but B1, or is that existing language? When incorporated within a patio and located in the rear, front, your gas pits and masonry kitchenette, is that existing language?
Yes, yes.
So this says, when incorporated on a patio.
Yes.
Okay, but if it's not on a patio, then you still go to the ZBA and have proof.
Correct, that's right.
Got it, see, that's a, okay. All right, so then, and just, I want to follow up on that. Where do I find, what is this, what's the maximum size of a patio? How big can that be? I think you said it, but I, it went right over my head.
It's on seven above.
Maybe if we show these illustrations, this is from the ordinance in 2019.
Oh, there, okay, got it. Okay, I see it, no, it's there.
The good thing too is that we've got a staff ordinance that has worked well.
The parameters of our existing ordinance as it relates to the size of the patio and what's permitted on the patio is kind of the basis for this, and we've had success so far.
That's, that's number seven.
Yes.
And that's existing language.
That's correct.
Was that 19?
Yes. And we're only reiterating this immediately adjacent to the residence, so that it clarifies, based on recommendation from our attorney, is just that repetitive, that we're looking at a patio that's adjacent to the rear of the home.
Yeah, so not if they're out in the yard.
Exactly.
Correct.
And so here's, here's examples that we have, these are actually lifted from our ord, our zoning ordinance.
Okay, there it is.
Where, you know, it's showing, one example is the rear, rear setback, I was sure, what's the top one?
That the top one is showing the rear setback and the side, side lot line.
So the black line is, that's the rear setback. So from the rear lot line to that black line is the 35-foot rear setback. And you see that there's some proposed patio elements 10 feet away from that setback line, which is part of that threshold of area that the patio can encompass. It still has to meet the side setbacks, it still has to meet the secondary frontage, if that's applicable. So within that defined area, which is that patio adjacent to the home, we can have landscape elements, is what we're calling them. And so we're adding to that list, instead of it was a kitchenette or a gas fire pit, is now a fountain, four-foot fountain, and a 14.
It would be built, for example, out there, because it's not adjacent.
Exactly.
And then it can only, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Sorry, Jeff, to your point is that if, if a resident wanted to do something beyond that, then they have the right to go to the zoning board of appeals and then seek the, that public input by both the, you know, the residents, that would be noticed, as well as the board to deliberate on that specific request.
And the total area is limited to 25%, the patio is?
Yes.
Well, it would mean that's always pergola, 25% of the rear yard or the secondary, secondary front yard, or, or the rear and secondary front yard, a minimum, a maximum of 25% of that area?
Yes.
Okay.
That's correct.
The other thing I, the other thing I would suggest, I, I would, if it was me, if I could do it, put in there, is to, to put an exclusion in there to be sure people understand that this not going to the zoning board of appeals is only if it's on a patio and adjacent to the property, adjacent to the house. If that, a pergola that's not on a patio, in the middle of a backyard, a nice pergola back there, that still needs to go to the ZBA. I think we should, in my opinion, that, some language should be put in there to differentiate the two, to tell people that they still have to go for that, because they might think, oh, now a pergola, we can just make, do it wherever we want, we don't need to go. Do you see, I think it should be more self-explanatory, that's my opinion. That it should, some language should be in there to differentiate.
And there's two ways to approach that education with the, with the community, and not necessarily by the depicting a process or a review by the zoning ordinance language, but, you know, through our application process, our, our website, our, our checklist forms, where it can guide the resident to understand what they may or may not have on a rear patio. That's why these illustrations are so helpful, because it helps, you know, take that wordsmithing and actually show an illustration. So I agree with you that the more that we can educate and, and be more direct, you know, the better, obviously. So I think there's some ways that we can convey that, either through language in the ordinance or through language as is presented in.
Now, I could just see, I could just see somebody saying, oh, look, we don't have to go to the ZBA for pergolas anymore, and then they just build a pergola in the middle of the backyard.
Well, it's not applied for a permit.
I know, I get that.
Someone with a permit, it gives us the opportunity to have that educational discussion.
I know, but then, then they built it and they said, oh, wait a minute, I thought you could do it anywhere.
Well, hopefully we're trying to.
Yeah, well, and to your, to your point, Andrea, which is 100% correct, I mean, we're familiar with someone in my neighborhood that built a patio not adjacent to the house, and they were, they had to go right before the ZBA for that, and through the permit process. So I mean, it's.
They built it without a permit.
I didn't think you needed a permit to build, you need a permit for a patio.
They did, yeah.
Yeah. I didn't think you needed one. You need a permit to do a, a stone patio?
Well, in that, in that instance, you wanted to use it as a.
Sports.
Sports court, which kind of led to a discussion with the zoning board of appeals, and then you wanted to just leave it as a patio, put it as lawn furniture, then that led to, well, all of a sudden, now we have a gazebo on it. So that's a unique circumstance.
But we deal with unique things.
But we do, and so, to that point, you know, you know, I think we have a really good method of, through our applications, our website, our communication with the public, answering questions on the phone or at the counter, what our residents can and cannot do on their property. And it's, it's education. And to Andrea's point, we've had this adopted since 2019, and it's been very effective, and it's been pretty, well, pretty well-received, I think, understood by our.
It was excellent. The 19 changes were excellent. By the way, your checklists are the best around.
Oh, good.
Thank you.
In fact, I use them as examples all the time.
Well, there you go.
Not all catching on yet.
Can you go back to the picture for a minute?
Oh, the one I just had?
Yeah.
So the top one, if you could pull it down a little bit. So this is not a great picture, but this is the rear, rear yard, and the encroachment is 10 feet into the rear yard. So you would call that immediately adjacent?
That, the terminology that we, that we looked at when we did the, I don't know the ordinance in front of me, but it wasn't, it was, the intention was that it would be incorporated within a patio. The word adjacent is really getting specific now when we're talking about the, the pergola.
So I'm on seven.
Because we specifically only wanted to allow for pergolas with the slatted roofs that were immediately adjacent to the house, not for.
Standalone.
Gazebo's or hard roof structures. This is only very specific to these wood slatted type structures.
I got it.
So we didn't, I, it wasn't the intention at that time to have it immediately adjacent for the walls and the piers, because walls and piers tend to be more of the perimeter of the patio. So that wasn't intended to be, it was intended to be incorporated on the patio immediately adjacent to. So now we're getting even more specific with the pergolas by saying immediately adjacent to. Is that?
So I'm, I'm looking at seven, which is not the language we're looking at now, and I apologize for the digression, but terrace or patio immediately adjacent to the residence, because it plays into the pergola. An open, unclosed, unenclosed paved terrace. Your example in the top section where those walls and seating is by 76 there, that's permissible within the 10 feet, correct?
Correct, and that is not to exceed four feet in height, we're very specific.
I got that. Okay.
Good question.
Okay.
So for the average homeowner, there's a difference between a pergola and a gazebo.
Yes, there is.
You know? And there's a difference between a sloped roof and a flat slap roof, right?
Yes.
And if they want one that goes this way, it's really a ZBA, right?
Right.
Or it's an enclosed roof, anything that's shedding water.
And that would be different than.
I have a few questions, if everybody's done.
Are you done? Want to ask a question?
About 40 of them.
Elder you.
That's why he brought the chocolates.
The first question is, I just want to make sure that I understand, or that all of us understand, what a patio or terrace is. Is it decked across? And is it dictated by the height of the grade? Is anything below a certain number considered a terrace? Because I have a wood deck that's in my house, it's up off the ground, because my finished floor is maybe two feet higher than the grade. So I walk out onto my deck, is that not considered a patio or a terrace because it's raised?
Correct. A pa, a deck is always considered part of the, of the residence, always part of the residential structure, is a deck, for setback calculations. A patio or terrace is an at-grade surface, of which it can have some of a raised patio as long as it's not exceeding 40 inches?
Used to have a rule about, maybe it was pertaining to retaining walls, it was 30 inches. So if the, if my deck is 30 inches or less, is it still considered a deck and it falls within the house setbacks versus the patio and terrace setbacks? Or if my deck, if my deck wasn't big enough that I could build that to the maximum and then step down onto a patio? Because I have a patio too that's on grade.
Correct. But you're, unfortunately, your deck is precluding you from having a patio immediately adjacent to your home. So you would not, you'd, you'd be limited depending on its configuration.
Yeah, you walk out, I have a deck, it's just an example, I mean, it could be anybody else in the township. And then from the deck, I step down to the patio, which is maybe eight to 10 feet away from the house. So that couldn't accept this pergola without a ZBA variance.
That's correct.
Nor, nor could the deck accept the pergola?
Correct, without going to the ZBA.
Because it's not a patio.
It's not a patio or terrace. We're being very specific about that.
So if you have a flat walkout deck off your kitchen, say, with a railing around it, and you will decide that you want to make it into a pergola by putting verticals and then slats, is that a ZBA or is that?
That would be a ZBA.
That would be a ZBA.
And then the terraces and patios are, are allowed within the setbacks that you mentioned, percentages and whatever. In any case, as long as they're on grade. Now, some people, first of all, the grades never level on a lot of lots, so it might start out on grade over here, but be 12 inches, I mean, at what point is it not on grade?
And that's, that is acceptable, as long as you don't go up to four feet, because then through the building code, then you have to have a safety measure.
So if it's, if any part of it is on grade, because sometimes the lot's slope, it's considered a terrace, even if you have to build a wall to support it?
That's correct.
And how about the few people that just put like one eight-inch block around the whole entire patio, just because for a planter or whatever, and, and the patio ends up being, say, eight to 12 inches, but it's still stone or concrete above the grade?
It's a patio.
Still a patio. So the only time it's a deck is if it's on a wood structure.
Correct.
Regardless.
Or polywood or whatever you want to call it.
I mean, some people used to build them right on grade, but if it's wood, it's not a terrace?
Correct.
Okay. So.
I think you're up to 39 questions.
He better, he better get more chocolates out to you.
I got a spare down here for you. So when you say that the pergolas, by the way, the whole, the whole idea is, it's, it's great, I mean, you're killing the ZBA with all these unnecessary, because they approve them anyway. So this allows them to not have to go to the ZBA, so I'm always in favor of things like this. But I just have the questions because I have to make sure I understand it.
No, please, no, absolutely.
So when you say, say pergolas, two, two things about the pergolas. I mean, they're beautiful, people love looking at them. In all cases, do they have to be screened? Because you're destroying the beauty of the pergola. If you don't have a lot of room, and if I build a pergola, I want to sit under it and be able to look out, and if I'm within 10 or 16 feet of the property and have to screen them with these, I mean, the, all the way to the height of the pergola has to be screened?
You're screening it from public view.
But is my neighbor public or only from the street?
Yes, your neighbor is public. Street is public, neighbors are public.
And it doesn't have to be run against the pergola, it could be planted on the perimeter, which is.
Right, but if it's, I'll use my example right now, my, my patio, if I, if I rip out my deck and put a patio, which just means I have to add a couple steps, I'm right at 16 feet from the property line, so the pergola can't be exceeding.
16 feet.
16 feet, so by the time I plant the shrubs, it just, I'm looking at shrubs, which is fine, but I want to look out, see the yard. And then, in theory, I got to screen it on all three sides if I build the.
On public view, that's right. It's no different than what these pergolas that are approved at the ZBA.
So every time, so, that's my, that was going to be my next 37th question. The people that come in to the ZBA and ask for pergolas, do they always have to screen them on all three sides?
Generally, I mean, that is a criteria that the board takes into account in many, most of the time. Unless there's really unique circumstances, they are required to be screened by Evergreen Plastics.
I was under the impression that pergolas or whatever need to be screened from public view as opposed to leaving a side open that he could view the rest of his backyard. Is that, but you're telling me now, the whole square has to be vegetation around it that obscures the visibility?
The structure itself has to be screened from public view. So how that, how that screening is placed on the property is going to be dependent on the view from the adjacent neighbors or from the street.
Yes.
So if it's immediately adjacent to the rear of the home, you're already limiting its visibility. I mean, in general, general, I think you're seeing a pretty modest pergola that's immediately behind the, the home. So much of the home could very well help obscure it, let alone other elements that might be part of, you know, built into the home, let alone existing vegetation. So that's why this is looked upon to make sure that it's clear that we're wanting that vegetation, but it's going to be a submission of a, of an application so that we can evaluate.
So you'll see it, you'll see it on the, on the architect's diagram, I guess, where your vegetation is or is not, is that right?
I'm just using this example because it's easy for me to understand. I rip out my deck, I put a patio, and I build a pergola. Can I go to the ZBA and ask for a variance to not put trees around it? They could still deny it, but at least.
Yes. Yes.
So I have the right to build a pergola and screen it, but if I don't want to screen one side of it, I could ask for a variance.
Absolutely.
The other thing is, is in my lot, again, it's very deep, so if I, if I wanted to build a 10 by 10 pergola, or 12 by 12, whatever, I would screen it. First, I have to build a patio. But I could build, because my, my rear yard setback is so far away from the house, and I already have the 16 foot on the side, theoretically, I could build a 12 by 12 addition and do nothing. If I, I mean, you, I could build.
A building addition, sure.
Because it's, it falls within the setback. And I don't have to screen it, and I could put a roof on it and do whatever I want.
That's right.
So the, in, in some cases, the pergola is outside the setback. Oh, wait a minute, so all pergolas have to be within the setback anyway?
Correct.
So to, to build something with a flat roof or any kind of a roof to match the So to build something with a flat roof or any kind of a roof to match the house, it would have to be an addition to the house?
Exactly.
Okay. And then before we get, and I don't have any questions about the fountain, but on the pergola, a lot of the pergolas, if not all of them, have the beams that are sculpted at the end that are cantilevered over. And a lot of times, they do that on all four sides. Depending on the height and where the gutter is in the overhang, it can't always be attached. I think we should have at least, even if you said 12 inches or six inches, just so that.
We're not saying attached.
I know, you're saying adjacent, but.
Right.
Well, our interpretation, like Patty said, there is room for interpretation. I mean, our general interpretation for immediately adjacent to is like two feet max, like, you know, I mean, it's, there is interpretation.
Well, it could be, it could be less.
But if you put a hard number in there, sometimes that actually makes it more difficult.
If I buy a generator and the generator manufacturer says I need to be four feet away, I was going to get to the mechanical equipment separately, but for the pergola, I can see closer to the house, a foot or two. You start putting it four feet away, and then it's almost freestanding.
Exactly.
Correct. Without writing that specific number, I mean, like, I think the interpretation would be two feet or under, I guess.
Because the cantilevered part of the sculpted beams might be 18 to 24 inches, and if they're 24, and I want to be six inches away from the gutter or whatever.
Sure.
So at least I understand that I don't have a patio or terrace. But the people that used to build the wood decks right on the grade, but that's still considered a deck, not a patio?
That's correct.
So the definition of a patio have to be stone or concrete? Because how about the people that have, like, pea pebble? It's not considered.
That's not a patio or a terrace.
So the mechanicals, it's contemplated that, obviously, air conditioners is the biggest one, generators. There is one part of this that I didn't understand. Let me just read it. And I understand that you can encroach no more than six feet. So if the generator has to be four feet away because of the cooling method or the airflow, it better not be more than two foot wide, right? Because it would exceed.
Exactly.
And then you're back to the variance again.
Exactly.
And to the other point, if I do move the air conditioner farther away because of service, whatever, I still have to meet the decibel requirement.
Yes, sir.
So if somebody's sleeping, I can't exceed it anyway. But the question, the part I didn't understand, it was something, oh. Allow a screen wall compatible with the building materials for side yard placement. You can project 16 into the six foot and of course 10 into the 30. And allow a screen wall compatible with the building to be not more than 10 feet. I didn't understand that. 10 feet long, because it can't be 10 feet from the resident.
Could you help us? What number are you looking at?
Oh.
Page three or something?
There's, it's section 42.517, ground mounted mechanicals. One, two, three.
We have one.
B3.
The third dot. There's no number on it, just one of these dots.
Oh, looking at my staff report.
Compliance with the.
If you look up at the screen, I think that'll answer, help answer your question. The intention was that the, okay, so if you, if you are going to screen it with Evergreen screening, the Evergreen screening could go further.
Right.
Into the 10 feet.
Correct.
But if you look at the right-hand side up on here, you'll see that the wall, the wall has to, the edge of the wall cannot go beyond.
Six or 10, depending on where you are.
Correct. So what we're doing by doing that is making sure that no matter what, you're still going to have at least a 10-foot or in a secondary front, a 30-foot green belt. So we're not going to allow for that masonry wall to go further into the green belt, but we would allow for plantings into a green belt.
That's why I don't understand this, this is the, in the case when I have a 16-foot side yard setback, I can't encroach more than six feet. So if I build a wall, the face of the wall cannot be more than six feet from the house. So whatever the thickness of the wall is, the air conditioner has to fit. So if I need air clearance, can you build a masonry wall where they leave the openings? I don't know the technical name, you know, where you.
That wouldn't be a screen wall then. I mean, at some point, it has to be a screen, the purpose of the screen wall is to obscure the view of the unit.
Okay. I think it does, but that.
It's rather uncommon that we get a request to screen.
But the real point is, is what is, if we're all in agreement that the masonry wall can't be more than six feet away from the face of the house, what is the, not more than 10 feet as measured from the residence apply to? I don't know what that's applicable to. Am I missing something?
Screen wall compatible with the building materials to be not more than 10 feet as measured from the residence.
I thought you were saying, maybe you're saying, well, I don't want you to, if you have an air conditioner that's this big, I don't want you to build a 30-foot long screen wall.
Oh, actually, that's.
Is that what that means? Because what if, I mean, I might, if the air conditioner's four feet, I might want to build a six-foot wall. Did you mean to say that it can't be longer than 10 feet?
That's actually a typo. In my staff report, it's a typo. So if you look at the language, it says set equipment inside yard shall be screened from view through the use of Evergreen plant material at least the height of the unit at the point of placement of the equipment, or by a screen wall consisting materials compatible with those used on the main building, and shall be no closer than 10 feet to the side lot line. So.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so that should allow a screen wall compatible with.
But it says 10 feet from the residence, so that's the typo.
Yeah, it should be 10 feet from the lot line.
Okay, but since I brought it up, is there, again, is there a maximum length? So if the air conditioner's four feet, can that wall be six feet? Or does it have to have a return? I just, we should know that just in case.
I was thinking there'd be an interpretation, if somebody were to come to me and say, hey, I'm going to put up a wall all along the side of my property, my argument would be, well, that's not a screen wall. A screen wall is.
It's a fence.
Meant to be around the unit.
So but if I shorten the screen wall, because when I heard the 10-foot, I thought I could not have more than 10 feet of wall, that's way.
Oh, yeah, I don't know.
So I said, well, if I need four feet here, and if I don't return it, you're going to see the unit.
Exactly.
Exactly.
So I run out of the 10 feet, that's why I was asking the question. So if I have to build four feet in front of it, and three feet this way and three feet that way, that's something you'll review?
That's correct. Yeah, and I think in general.
Because if the unit's three feet and it needs clearance on this side and clearance on that side, you might need.
And you can see up on the example, it has a return and it comes out and then it kind of returns back, so.
So it's obscuring the view from the street.
Right.
Right? It's obscuring the view from the, either the side street or the neighbors, and then partially to the rear because of the visibility of the side.
Which I can't do in 10 feet, that's why I was asking, because if the air conditioner's three feet and you need two feet here.
Well, if you can't do it, then you have to use Evergreen screening.
No, because, no, this, it's not applicable because this was a typo, it was referring to something else.
Well, then let's just move on.
Well, point of order.
No, one more quick question if I can. The decibels, where is it read from? The property line at the unit, 70 decibels?
25 feet away from the unit.
25 feet away?
Yes.
And I have a question about next, when we set the date from all this. Assume we have 15 people that come in that want to hear or raise issues about what they've read or whatever. Patty, are you going to be able to field that? Or Andre going to field the questions with all these people coming in, going to the mic?
Absolutely.
I think they should be happy.
Yeah.
We do.
Makes life easier.
We got three.
So the decibel is not at the property line? So if I have a 16-foot setback, I got to go nine feet onto the person's property to meet.
The measurement has to be 20 feet away.
And then with the wall-mounted equipment, there's no maximum off the wall, whatever the equipment needs, we're not going to worry about it if the unit is three feet or four feet.
Correct, we're not specifying.
Okay. And what was, what was the reason for this fully obscured rooftop that's just reinforcing what, that's already in the ordinance?
Exactly. Yeah, so that's consistent with what we presently have, and we're just reiterating that. So that's really no change.
Okay, I'm done.
Good job.
And you were under 40, by the way.
So the 10-foot length confused the hell out of me.
Yeah, sure, I apologize for that.
All right, so.
All right, I'll make a motion to schedule a hearing for February 20th to hear this, whatever, however you want to word it.
Where the next meeting is?
Propose ordinance, okay. A hearing for February, February 20th, 2022, 2023.
Yeah, wrong date on there.
There you go. See?
We'll get that corrected.
So there's a motion to.
Support.
Move this to February 20th, 2023, correct?
Yes.
And there's a support.
And there's been support for that? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, good.
Thank you very much, and I appreciate the comments and the questions because it helps clarify and get us prepared for the public hearing.
Well, we're a diverse but insightful group, so some of the vibrations to give you a feeling to how to housekeep it and put it back in order and bring it forward. Thank you for all the work that's been done.
That's a lot of work, but it's going to help the township and residents.
It's going to help the residents a lot.
It's going to help the ZBA a lot as well.
True.
Because when I was on that, that was three quarters of the.
So we do have another.
Okay, we have another important element under general business, the election of officers for the planning board. And how do you want to start that? I would like to make a recommendation, you know. I've sat in this chair and been very, very pleased and honored to be able to lead the pack, so to speak. Sometimes our issues are convoluted and a lot of the times, they're straight forward and we resolve them and move them forward. But without Patty and without Andre, and Wade to recording now, and Kelly, sometimes the job can be very difficult, or at least you have to do a lot of home study. But at this juncture, my, I would like to take my name out of any kind of recommendation right now to continue in this role, but serve as a member of the planning commission. So I'll take nominations for others, and one in particular. I'd like to nominate Mr. Addo if he's interested in the presidency.
Let's support that.
Or chairperson, if you would.
I don't think I've been here long enough to become the president.
You've been, you've been here long enough.
I have a nomination.
Second, say again?
I have a nomination as well.
Okay, well, I'm not done yet. Did you accept or?
I prefer not to, if that's okay.
Not to? Sure, you defer, okay.
Go ahead with your suggestion.
Is there a second for Jeff?
Yes, second.
Second for Jeff, okay.
Jeff's had a lot of experience in that chair.
Any other?
Happy to do it, again. I'm happy to do it.
Very good. That's, that's half the battle is that you're enthusiastic for it.
I do nominate Richie as vice chair.
Who?
Richie Addo.
Rich Addo? Do you accept that, sir? I'll second it.
I'll accept that.
Okay, very good. So we have.
Long as Jeff never gets sick.
We have nominations for chair and vice chair.
Only when there's a contentious item, I'll not be here.
Are there, any other comments? All in favor of the chair and vice chair, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? Okay.
Congratulations.
Very good, congratulations. And thank you very much for the.
Thank you.
Support that I've received all these years.
And thank you, Tom, for everything you've done all these years.
We're still going to be on the board, right?
Yes, 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 I'm just moving chairs.
You can't go, yeah.
You confuse us today because I'm always sitting there, Neil's always here, you put this.
It was a test of flexibility.
They had a feeling something was coming, Jeff.
I took my driver's license to make sure of my name.
That was the clue.
That's right, something was up.
Anyway, thank you very, very much for all the past and the future. We'll work together and keep the motion going. Jeff, I'm sure you can handle the role you have before and do it again. And Mr. Addo?
Thank you for.
Bring forth your.
Absolutely.
Interest and expertise. Anything else on the agenda here other than the meeting, next meeting? Which is February the 6th? Did I read that right?
Yes.
Yes.
I have one item to bring up that's not on the agenda, if I can.
Oh, if you can, yes, there may be another business. Go ahead.
We have had in the past, and we will again, Birmingham Country Club with their.
Pickleball.
Pickleball.
Battle ball, whatever you call it.
Pickleball.
Pickleball. Okay, that's not up now, and I'm not talking about that, but the other day, I was by there, and I sent some pictures to you. The lighting that's coming off of the Birmingham Country Club is unbelievable. That, especially the two big lights that are in the parking lot.
Went onto the street?
Oh, yeah. I turned the corner and it got my, I said, holy mackerel, there's something on fire. It was really bright and from Saxon. And then also, you can see from Norfolk, and on Norfolk, you can also see the courts themselves, and the lights are very bright. Now, I questioned what our site plan, what we approved about lighting, and we did, and I have it here with me, that we did put lighting in. But it's my understanding that lighting, we do this all the time on the parking lot, that lighting has to be shielded, it's not supposed to come.
It's to be down.
Downlight or shielded, whatever. These are not, and you have those pictures, I don't know if you can put those up, I have them on my phone, but they're really bright, you really should go over and look. There's two big lights way back into the property, but they shine, they really are bright.
And as you have brought this to our attention, we will be following up with our court enforcement officer, and in fact, Andrew has already reached out to the Birmingham Country Club.
Okay.
So they are aware that we are looking into this matter, so we will certainly follow up.
Oh, fire.
That's, that's the court, that's the shot they took out of my car from Norfolk. That's the sports court, the, you know, the court, the sports court. And the other one, that is what you see on Saxon.
So that's not what they read to, correct?
No. There is, again, there's another shot from a different spot. That's, it's really bright. I mean, I'm surprised we haven't any complaints from people that live there, but nevertheless, I saw it, and I said, that can't be right. So I want to bring it up and let you know about it.
Thank you. Illumination has to be downward, and has to be shielded, so it's directed downward. You cannot see the light source.